Okay, we're ready to begin. All right. I'd like to call the special meeting of the city council to order. City clerk, roll call please.
Councilmember Mora.
Here.
Councilmember Sarno.
Here.
Councilmember Trujillo.
Here.
Mayor Protem Zamora.
Yeah.
Mayor Rodriguez.
Here. Okay, public comments will be considered after item number three on the agenda to allow for the interested persons to receive information during the general plan update presentation. Item number three, general plan update presentation. I would like to call on Director of Planning, Wayne Morrell.
Not a mayor. Is Joe Angel gonna be on video or not?
I, I think that he's under the weather.
Oh, okay.
Today, unfortunately, yes, so. I don't think he's gonna turn his camera on. Hi, Wayne.
Hi, good afternoon, everyone.
Hey, Wayne.
Thanks for being here. Hi, Juanita. Thanks for being here to listen to this presentation. There will be a presentation from the MIG team. They're the consultant that the city has hired to prepare the general plan. In addition to the consultant and the main parties are Jose Rodriguez and Laura Stetson. But in addition to those two, I also have several of my planning staff that are also part of the presentation. Laura Reimer, our consultant, and I also have Kwong, my assistant director. They will also be part of this presentation. So I would like to start by introducing Laura Stetson.
Okay.
Thank you, Wayne. And Mayor, members of the city council, thank you for spending time with us this evening. If we can wait just a sec, we have a PowerPoint presentation to bring up.
Sure, sure. Thank you.
And we will say next to the person operating the slides, just to help us move along this evening. We've put this presentation together to respond to some of the questions that the council has raised and that have been discussed in the last several city council study sessions with, with the public as just before the general plan goes through the, the official public hearing process. Before we get underway with the presentation, I did want to mention that it's, it's been a real pleasure to work with your community over the last year and a half on the general plan update as, as planning consultants. MIG works on many general plan programs and zoning projects in, in communities across California. And every community we go into is different and has different issues and different approaches to doing things. And it's really nice to be able to have that diversity and to see a general plan really reveal what a community is about. And so that's what we take great joy and pride in doing is coming into a community and listening to what the community has to say and have the general plan reflect that vision. And that's our goal and role as planning consultants, not to come in with any preconceived ideas, but really to let the process unfold. And so that's something that has been happening over the last 18 months and is, is coming now before both the planning commission and the city council through the public hearing process. We want to start the presentation by real shortly describing and reminding the public about what a general plan is, what it does and what it doesn't do. And the general plan is oftentimes described as the blueprint for development of a community. It's your plan. It's not the here and now, but it's something that looks forward over the next 15 and 20 years and tells the community, the community expresses where you want to go as a community. And the stepping stones to get there are something different than this actual vision. And so the blueprint for Santa Fe Springs reveals several big new ideas that are set forth in the general plan, the draft general plan that will shortly go through the public hearing process. And all of the things that you see on this, the slide in front of you are in the introduction part of the general plan. Next slide. The general plan is something that every community and every city, every county in California is required to do and to keep it relevant to the community. It sits at the top of this pyramid of planning. California law gives every community the ability to plan for itself. And this means that you can change land uses, you can change the vision, you can do things over time because you have that ability to do that. So the general plan is the guiding force. It's implemented through things like your zoning regulations. So the zoning code will be updated to conform and implement the general plan once the general plan sets that vision. And there are other things that, that flow down from the general plan to implement it, but it's important to remember that it's at the top and you absolutely have the ability to guide land use decision making, to change last land use decisions. And over time, it's not considered a taking or removing the ability of a, a property owner to do something with his or her property. It's just, it's changing things. It's, it's moving forward in time. Next slide. There are some minimum requirements that state law says a general plan must do. It has to be long term in scope. It must address the entire city. It has to be internally consistent. And I'm going to come back to that in just a moment. And foremost, it needs to reflect community values and visions. And we've talked to the council on many prior occasions as to how, how much community engagement there has been in the process. Next slide. So if a city doesn't have a current general plan, what might happen if, if the, the plan is out of sync with current state laws? Well, the, the city could be ordered to fix the general plan. In a very extreme case, if a, a plan is challenged, the, the courts could put a stay on any development, on current applications until the general plan is up, up to speed. And it, a city may even be charged attorney's fees for anybody challenging the, the anything that's in the general plan. So it's really important to make sure that the general plan complies with state law and reflects what the community is looking forward to moving over the next few decades. Next slide. There are required chapters of a general plan to address land use, housing, circulation, open space, conservation, environmental justice, noise. There are all, there's also the ability to include in the general plan optional things that are important to a community. And in this case, Santa Fe Springs has included an economic development element. It is considered an optional element, but it has the same weight as any other of the required elements for the general plan and, and certainly the housing element as well. Next slide. The foundation for the Santa Fe Springs general plan are the guiding principles. These are guiding principles that were developed through the community engagement process and were confirmed by the city council once they were developed. And so all of the planning that, and all of the goals, policies and implementation programs that are in the general plan flow down through these affirmed guiding principles. Next slide. There was a question as to whether or not it's important to address all of these elements at the same time. The housing element certainly has a statutory deadline and needs to be adopted during a certain timeframe. But the question has been raised, well, can't you just move the housing element forward? And let's come back and, and discuss some other issues that we feel might benefit some additional public discussion. And it's, it's not really possible to do that because these are inextricably tied to each other. The land use element sets forth the policy on which the housing element is based. The circulation element sets forth a circulation plan that relates to land use and so that they're balanced. So all of these things are balanced and need to be adopted together. Now, based on the direction that the general plan gives, the zoning code update can refine that policy direction and it will come after this process. But the, because the housing element has to be adopted on a particular deadline and because as Director Morrell has indicated in prior meetings that there are some grants that are tied to the general plan program that have to be completed by the end of February. It's important to meet these deadlines and get everything to move forward together. So that's the reason why we're asking the councils to consider all of this together and to move forward with it to, to ensure that it can all be adopted by February 28th of this year. Next slide. The rest of the presentation will talk about and, and focus on some issues that have been raised regarding environmental justice and what does it mean and why is that a cornerstone of the general plan? And also questions about the freeway overlay zone and also the, the changed in some of the areas of the community from a heavier industrial designation to a light industrial designation. So I will let the, the rest of the team explain and discuss these topics.
I'm going to briefly go over the environmental justice and I know we presented, presented some of the information previously, but I want to just emphasize why environmental justice is important to the Santa Fe Springs community. And so just briefly, what is environmental justice? What it does is look at and create fairness for all residents in the community regardless, you know, of their race, regardless of their national origin or income. Based on development of laws and regulation, it just creates a fair, a fairness, no matter what the race and population is of the community. We do recognize that Santa Fe Springs consists of 76% of the population that is Hispanic or Latino community. They make up a large proportion of the community. Next slide. The key component of environmental justice is recognizing those areas that are most are create the most pollution burdens and other economic and health challenges to the community. So there is criteria to identify those. And as I mentioned previously, most, almost all of the residential areas are within the top 10% of the state of California. This is only a California comparison, but in Santa Fe Springs, it's within the top 10% of the most pollution burden communities in California. Next slide. These are the key pollution burdens that affect the community in Santa Fe Springs, both residents and the business community. There are cleanup sites, there are sites, this is the top, in terms of all of the state of California, cleanup sites of, of sites that have been contaminated. Santa Fe Springs in the top of California. The top within dealing with hazardous waste, the top 100 percentile, meaning of all the areas in California, the community is affected by or is in close proximity to businesses that handle, generate or transport hazardous waste. The top 2% in the state of California with toxic release, and I'm going to provide some information a little bit on toxic release and some of the issues with toxic release and being close to those businesses. The top 2% in California in terms of groundwater threats, and again, those are affected by the local groundwater that affects more of a regional area, but it is affecting Santa Fe Springs. We know that some of the wells have closed in Santa Fe Springs. So that affects wa, how, how the community accesses water in the community. The top 5% in solid waste, these are the older landfills that have been closed in Santa Fe Springs. And they can still have an impact to the community. And then last, one of the key pollution burdens, again, why Santa Fe Springs was triggered as an environment, as for doing environmental justice is the particulate matter from exhaust from businesses. It's that fine particulate matter that, that community inhales. So that's within the top 18% of California. Next slide.
Jose, I got a question for that real quick.
Yep.
So out of, from all, all the businesses here, how many of those businesses are actually active and part of the problem or these problems from the past?
The, the next slide is actually going to answer a little bit of that question. Next slide.
That's fine. Thank you.
No problem. So the toxic release one is definitely an issue. It can, can be an issue or i- is an issue. So just, we quickly looked at what we call the hotspot program where you can download and identify that this is public information through the, and I apologize for that acronym, but it's the Southern California air quality management district. They've been doing this reporting for the past 20 years based on a, a law, AB 2588. And so businesses are supposed to report what type of emissions they release through their activities. And again, these are, they're allowed to release these. But nonetheless, they're still, they can still impact the community. So there are 14, as of last year. This is for one, one year total. There are definitely, there are 14 businesses in Santa Fe Springs that have generated the following air pollutants in Santa Fe Springs. So there's a, a listing called criteria pollutants. And so that's the listing there. It's carbon monoxide, nitrogen oxide. I'm not going to read them all. These are, these are hazardous to breathe, to breathe, but not the most hazardous. So about, within those 14 businesses, they released about 106 tons through the air over the whole year of last year. Now, there are limited businesses that do release toxic pollutants. This is ammonia, the, you know, this is through manufacturing, formaldehyde, furniture manufacturing, lead, benzene. It's not as much as the criteria pollutants, but about 11,000 pounds per year. We do recognize that there are several businesses that are within less than 500 feet and are producing, there's a couple of them that are producing over 500 pounds per year, literally across the street from some single family neighborhoods. So we do recognize there are businesses and we think a lot of those businesses will remain in Santa Fe Springs in the industrial area and even in the light industrial area. But what we want to do in this general plant, plan is protect from existing or newer businesses that produce this much of pollution and maybe not having them that close to single fam, family neighborhoods. Next. Councilmember Sarno, that I, that had answered, there are, there are other businesses that have older landfills that still admit some methane gases. There are businesses that handle hazardous materials. But I wanted to show the, the emissions because I know that's, that's a a, a key issue, not just in Santa Fe Springs, other communities as well. It was an issue in Paramount and other areas that have high industrial usage.
Okay, so that, that's, and that's, and I don't know if it's, could we know the names of those businesses, those 14 businesses that are actually the pollutants of this? Because that's part of the zone change, correct? And trying to not duplicate this again for future businesses, correct?
Yeah.
So where those businesses are at, determine the zones of, of where the new zoning or the, the change of zone is going to be.
Yeah, well, I think the purpose and Kwong's going to present the light industrial background information, but I think the key thing is future businesses that pollute, have those high pollutants is to buffer those away from residential area. So that's why we identified what we call the green buffer zone where we want to, where we show that there's a transition between industrial and residential areas. Let's, let's create more space between them. Let's add more trees. There's programs in the general plan and policies that create that, that green buffer to separate those uses.
Well, it's getting harder from the AQMD to be able to do any more work as, as they do it now because they're, they're under strict guidelines, correct?
Correct, correct. There is, there is guidelines from the AQMD. But then these are the other pollution burden or, or methods that we put in the general plan to address these pollution burdens. Again, as I, we mentioned, the light, expanding the light industrial. Make sure we're monitoring these businesses because they're, these businesses provide that information to the AQMD. But I know there was a case in Paramount where there was the smells of burning, burning different businesses and the AQMD came to monitor, monitor these businesses and make sure that they're not polluting beyond what they're supposed to or releasing really hazardous chemicals.
And Jose.
Go to the next, oh, go ahead, go ahead, Wayne.
Oh, Jose, I had, real quickly, part of doing or having this process, we realized and have identified some of the businesses that are causing these environmental issue. The goal is that there are some businesses that are next to residential right now. And those, we want to make sure that in the future, by having this plan, that those uses essentially would not be able when it changes for those types of uses to continue. So that's part of the process, thinking of the future and planning.
I, I agree 100%. I'm just, you know, around our residential areas and, and stuff, we need to protect our, our residents and our, the community. But some of these businesses that are outside of those areas, you know, are, are getting affected also because of it.
You're right. Councilmembers Sarno.
So that's, that's, I'm just trying to make us aware of, you know, what's going on. I'm trying to catch myself up to speed with it. So thank you.
All right, go ahead and go to the next slide. I'm going to turn it over to city staff to continue the presentation.
What?
Great. Good evening, council members. We've heard a lot, several discussions regarding the freeway commercial land use designation. So I wanted to provide more details regarding what freeway commercial means and how it translates from the general plan to the built environment. So on this slide, on the left, I've copied the vision for the freeway commercial land use designation from the 1993 general plan. And 1993 was the last time that the land use element was updated. Back in 1993, the city recognized the value of freeway visibility and classified all 90 acres along the freeway, the I-5 freeway as freeway commercial. Underlined in this paragraph, you'll see that this type of land use is best suited for mixed commercial uses which take advantage of the exposure provided by the freeways. So that was the 1993 vision. On the right, I've copied the freeway commercial land use designation vision from the proposed general plan update. Similarly, it acknowledges the importance of freeway visibility. It lists example uses. But it goes beyond that and also emphasizes the importance of attracting sales tax revenue generating uses, which is something that we've heard is a priority for the city. So next slide. Like Laura explained earlier, the general plan states the guiding vision for the city. The general plan is a long-term planning document and it contemplates where we want Santa Fe Springs to be in 20 years. It's the zoning ordinance that translates that long-term vision of the general plan into everyday decisions. The zoning ordinance contains details about how each general plan land use designation is implemented, meaning that it's the zoning ordinance that details the development standards for a particular site, the allowable uses for a particular site and so on. The freeway commercial land use designation of the general plan is implemented via the freeway overlay zone. The freeway overlay zone was adopted in 2003 and it contains a long list of allowable uses for properties along the I-5 freeway. The freeway overlay zone section of the zoning code even includes a section about the preferred uses for the zone, which are copied here. Like the general plan freeway commercial land use designation, the freeway overlay zone states the intent is to create a vibrant window into the city and it acknowledges the value of freeway visibility. But you'll also notice that the zoning code recognizes industrial uses within the freeway overlay zone. Next slide. The freeway overlay zone allows for a really diverse range of uses. There have been a lot of discussion about the fear of a business becoming non-conforming once the general plan is adopted. So to lessen those fears, I went through the properties within the proposed freeway commercial land use designation and highlighted whether, whether the use complies with the freeway overlay zone, which is shown in yellow, whether they do not comply with the freeway overlay zone, which is shown in red, and the properties that have vacant uses, which are, is shown in green. You'll see here that not only does every property along the northern portion of the I-5 corridor comply, the vast majority of these uses, of these businesses are also sales tax generating uses. Next slide. Similarly, all but one property in the middle portion of the I-5 corridor complies. Next slide. And then lastly, all but one property in the southern portion of the I-5 corridor complies. What I think is especially important to highlight on these slides is the number of vacant parcels within the freeway commercial land use designation. We know that these parcels will be developed eventually. So the general plan land use designation provides a vision for what we want to see happen on these parcels. Development doesn't occur overnight, but the general plan has a 20-year vision. So it's important that thought is put into what the city believes is the best use of this land in the long run. So next slide. And with that in mind, we created a couple, oh, the previous slide, actually. A couple of development visions. In this slide, this is the Santa Fe Springs swap meet site. So, but in no way, shape or form am I suggesting that there's a proposal to redevelopment in the swap meet, but I use this as an example since it's one of the largest pieces of land along the freeway. But should the swap meet be redeveloped at some point, the vision within the freeway commercial land use designation would look something like this, where we have several smaller buildings that provide commercial services and business services. And, and a real rule example of this is Soco along the 405 freeway. And that fits with our freeway commercial vision. It's very attractive from the freeway. It provides spaces for people to work, shop and gather. So next slide. And then also there are several vacant parcels that are adjacent to existing businesses that have the potential to expand. Here we see the parcels adjacent to Mike Thompson RV and the Dynasty Suites. These businesses have expressed interest in expanding. They benefit from freeway visibility and they provide tax revenue to the city. So these are the, exactly the types of uses that are envisioned for the freeway commercial land use designation. Next slide.
So, good evening, council. I'll continue with Laurel's presentation and highlight some of the other changes within our proposed general plan. I'm starting with buffering from residential uses from heavy industrial uses. As you'll see on this, this, this slide, specifically the proposed general plan includes a new light industrial land use designation. As you will find, the preferred land use land map, light industrial is proposed within 500 feet from nearby residential properties. Next slide, please. So although the California Air Resource Board recommends that uses such as distribution centers, rail yards, chrome platers be located 1,000 feet from a sensitive land use, staff felt that 500 feet was a good compromise that still conveys the city's proactively looking to address the air quality impacts near residential uses. As opposed to the 1,000 feet, we, we chose 500 feet instead. Next slide, please. Staff would like to point out.
I had a question, a quick one, on the one on the back, the, can you go back? So the bottom says dry cleaners avoid, so 300 feet from any home? Is that what we're? Is that, see on the bottom?
Correct. Th- this is essentially just obviously a snapshot of their resource board land use handbook. Yes, that is correct. There's, there's various distance recommendations for several different land use categories. But I think.
Would we be allowed to, if we adopt this zoning, we wouldn't be allowed to open up another dry cleaners in the promenade or anywhere around the housing element, correct?
Again, this is from the Air Resource Board and it's simply a recommendation for distances from sensitive land uses. It's, it's up to the city council to, to adopt a, a, a distance requirement that you feel is suitable.
But there's also, if I may, there's also another option. We all remember when Santa Fe Cleaners was located within the promenade and they wanted to locate and they're now on O N D. They had this whole issue with the PUC and being located within 300 feet because we know there's a townhome right to the west of it. So what they did, it is a dry cleaning store, a dry cleaning business, but they send all of their clothing to another facility. So there's no, there's none of the use of the PUC or the other chemicals at that location. So that's all they were able to relocate without being in conflict with this.
Okay. Thank you.
Next slide please. So this slide shows, uh, a map of the existing general plan land use and a- as you'll see, we currently only have two industrial land use categories identified, specifically business park and industrial. Currently, there's, there's not a light industrial category. Next slide please. So, and because there, there isn't a light industrial category, the current land use plan actually uses business park designation to buffer heavy industrial uses from nearby residential uses, schools and parks. Next slide please. So why should we buffer sensitive land uses? Because they covered some of that in his slides. The reality is, you know, certain heavy industrial uses do have a negative environmental impact onto the nearby uses. These impacts include air quality, noise, traffic, and groundwater, to name a few. Next slide please. So in the next two slides, I'll share a few examples of some heavy industrial uses that the general plan is hoping to buffer from the nearby residential uses. For example, chemical manufacturing uses, uh, for their odor and air quality impacts. Um, storage of flammable and hazardous uses for the urban fire risk and air quality impacts. Uh, salvage and reclamation yards for the noise and aesthetics impacts. Next slide please. So a couple of more examples, um, include animal feedlot and slaughterhouses for their odor, air quality, and possibly even noise impacts. Concrete batch plants for noise, air quality, and traffic impacts. Uh, trucking terminal and trucking yards for traffic, noise, and air quality impacts. So these are just a, a few of, of the heavy industrial land uses uh, that, uh, the proposed general plan is hoping to buffer, but there, there's certainly more. We just didn't go through each and every one of them here for you.
I got another question. Sorry, guys. Uh, and I'm sorry for asking so many questions, but you know, I, I just, I don't want it just to be a presentation. I actually want to get more information on it, but how many of these businesses do we have going back to the beginning? That actually, how many, uh, slaughterhouses do we have in Santa Fe Springs? How many concrete batch plants do we have in Santa Fe Springs? Um, how many chemicals and, uh, the salvage yards and stuff like that do we actually? Do we know that answer?
Not offhand, but I, I could tell you, you know, there are certainly truck terminals, concrete batch plants, salvage yards, and chemical manufacturing facilities that are currently located, uh, within five hundred feet from a residential zone.
Okay, so at some point, could we get a copy of those businesses and where they're located? And so we see what this rezoning, why we're doing it and where they're at?
Wong, we do have, Wong, as part of the general plan and also part of the existing general plan, we have a list of all hazardous type, type uses and they're all plotted on a map. But I think what's important to understand is that those uses are existing and provided that they do not have any change, those would be allowed. The general plan is speaking of, you know that there are impacts of these uses. So the goal is to change the zoning or rezone in such a manner that those uses in the future would not be allowed next to residential area or next to sensitive receptors because they already, many of those uses that already exist. For example, there's a number of warehouses that are next to residential and believe it or not, warehouses dispense quite a lot of particulate matter. If you were to look at the research, there's quite a number of respiratory complaints next to warehouse. So with this plan, the goal is when those properties are redeveloped, you do not have similar types of uses.
I don't, I, I mean, I, again, I agree with you guys that these should not be around our residential areas. We should not have any of these types of businesses within a thousand, five thousand square feet of, or linear feet of our, our residential housing. But I, I want, I would like a concrete batch plant. Where's a concrete batch plant around any of our housing? The only one that I know of is on Stage Road and on Rosecrans. So I don't know where any other concrete batch plants are that would, you know, affect our residential area from, from that.
You, you are correct, council member Sono, just thinking of the concrete batch plant, the ones that you mentioned, they are not next to residential. The one that we had for a little while was the one over on Mondan next to residential and that was Caltrans and we.
Yeah, that wasn't, that had nothing to do with us.
And we knew the issues that occurred there, but again, big picture is to make sure that in the future, those types of uses are not located next to residential. We're not saying that these uses are right now, but we are thinking of the future.
Well, that's, and that's exactly, for our residential, I agree one hundred percent, but this is an industrial city. So there are uses in an industrial city that are not great for residentials, but that's why they're in an area to where they don't affect other businesses or other, other places. So I, I just want to make sure that when I'm, when I'm gonna agree to, to vote on something, that I know, you know, that we're not just throwing like a concrete batch plant. We're talking more around our residential areas. And I don't know any of, you know, the two screens that I'm looking at right now, the animal and the concrete batch plant, there's nothing by our residential area.
No, you're absolutely correct.
Why we're changing the zoning around our, our housing element and I don't see that around our housing element.
And let, let me explain a little. So what you are seeing is essentially we're giving you example of uses that we would not want to see next to, to residential. We do have some trucking terminals and truck yards that are next to residential. We do have some warehouses that are next to residential. But it's important for people to understand that with the general plan, we're not saying that those uses are going to go away. What we're saying is when there's an opportunity for those properties to be redeveloped in the future, that we do not continue down the same path. So if it is a warehouse right now and the zoning is M two, then we're, we're rezoning it so that when it is redeveloped, all of those, those problematic impacts, the asthma, the respiratory ailment, et cetera, that that does not continue in the future. And I think it's important for people to understand that.
Um, I have a question. Um, kind of like in Jay's, going in Jay's questioning. Why won't we even put an slaughterhouse or animal feed? Has people been asking to put those in our city? I, I just, how do we come up with a slaughterhouse? Like, how does that come up even in there or the concrete? Who comes up with that? There's like, in my eyes, and what I, my thinking, like, I can't see a slaughterhouse coming in right here on Pioneer Boulevard or, or, or like, why would we pick a slaughterhouse or concrete batch? I mean, the only time we would have something that big was like when we're doing the five freeway, I could see, and that's not permanent, that's temporary, and it's one of those out of our control because it's through the state and Caltrans. But why are like specifically slaughterhouse, concrete batch? Why are specifically, specifically those things right there?
I think maybe we chose the, the wrong illustration, but this was just meant as an example. I do know that we did have a crematory that was proposed next to residential. That's, that's a little, a little different. So maybe the slaughterhouse example wasn't the best to show, but we're just trying to show that there are certain uses that we wouldn't want next to residential, not necessarily that this is something that's viable and somebody has, has presented that to us. So if Quang could continue and we look at some of.
I just have one more question. So where we have a, a concrete batch plant right now, we, we're saying we would not allow them to open up, if they sold it, we wouldn't allow them to open up another batch plant. Is that correct?
If the use currently allows it and there isn't any change within the general plan or the subsequent zoning, then it would be allowed. But if it was the, let's say relocate within a zone that's adjacent to residential and the general plan was in place, then no, it would not be allowed.
Wayne, I, see, this is where I'm getting, see. We're, we're concentrating just on residential and there's two parts to this. There's an industrial part and there's a residential part. The residential part, I agree with one hundred percent, but we're not just talking about the resident. If you're basing everything that we're doing right now on residential, then why are the businesses getting angry about rezoning their areas? We have to understand both sides. You can't, we can't just keep implementing residential. I agree with you a hundred percent. None of these businesses should be around our residential area, but some of these businesses are in our industrial area. So we need to not just talk about residential.
Okay.
Co-mingle together.
Yeah, I totally agree with you and maybe I came in too late, but let's look at industrial.
Wait, wait, this, this is City Manager Ray Cruz. Um, I think we're focusing on that because when it's industrial, not near residential, there's no issues. There's, most of the city is staying industrial, not a problem. The what, the reason we're bringing this up is that the business groups have been more, um, complaining about that interface. And these are some examples where that happened. We, if you don't have a, a, a concrete batch plant example, but we do have an asphalt batch plant example that someone wants to put near residential. So, um, you know, the, the animal feed may have not been the best example, but we do have other examples. And this is a big issue because this topic, although there's, you know, many, many acres in here that won't be impacted at all, but the ones that are having the biggest issues and why you're having the most calls about and letters about and probably public speakers about are the interfacing with residential.
Well, I just think that that's important. We, there's, there's two focuses here. We have a residential focus and we have a industrial and a business focus. And we need to make sure when we're seeing something, we're not overlaying the industrial over our residential. These, these uses that we're talking about around our residential, one hundred percent, they should not be around our, our, our general, uh, residential areas. But some of these uses are in areas that close to the freeway and, and see fit for what they do. Why are we rezoning them to change? For what reason? What are they, what is it not doing or what is it doing to, to benefit a zone change?
If we let Quang continue with his presentation and let's.
I'm sorry, I'm asking all these questions and I know we gotta go to another meeting, but.
Uh, Laurel had her hand up. Uh, I'd like to give her an opportunity to speak. Laurel, please continue.
Well, I just wanted to clarify that the reason why these examples were given is that these are existing uses that are detailed within our heavy manufacturing zone. And so why creating a, a, a different land use designation of light industrial helps to create a buffer and Quan's previous couple of slides showed that they, the, um, change in land use designation from just industrial to light industrial is for the properties that are adjacent to the more sensitive land uses. Um, and I know he'll, he'll go further into that, but that's why these particular, these are the types of uses that I don't think anyone would really want to live next to, but with the way that our current planning documents are written, we don't have any sort of buffer. So we, we're not saying to get rid of these uses citywide. It's just that these are the types of uses that we are concerned about. Uh, and, and there's others as well that we want to make sure that we do create some sort of, uh, buffer between a, a more impactful use in our residence.
I just have a quick question. I just, and maybe I'm, I'm understanding it, or maybe I'm not, but I'm looking at is if they're industrial, they're in the industrial area, we are grandfathering those. So this is going to be anything that wants to be changed for the future closer to our residence where that area is. Is that more like, is that, I'm getting it as everything's in the industrial area? That's fine. We don't need to change it as long as out of the area where, you know, it not really much of an impact. We can grandfather those. We're looking at the future closer to the home because of what we need to build, correct?
That, that's correct. Um, so these examples is, is just a small batch of the M two uses that we're trying to prohibit next to residential. It, it, by no means are we saying these land uses, we're, we're not allowing them throughout the city, just within the five hundred foot radius of residential properties. And that is all. We're, we're, we are not prohibiting them citywide.
So you are changing those zones citywide off of these land uses.
We are proposing to change the land use categories of properties that are within five hundred feet of a residential property from the existing industrial classification to a light industrial classification um, to avoid potentially these types of land uses when they are within five hundred feet from a residential property.
Okay, so the companies that are in the industrial district doing heavy manufacturing, they're not going to be impacted at all with the new, uh, zone changes?
Not if they're not within that five hundred foot.
As long as they're not within five hundred feet of a resident.
So, so, um, a way far majority of our properties are going to have no changes from that more heavy industry. It's, it's just those interfaces, which is a much smaller percentage of our geographic, uh, zone of our entire city. So it's.
Could we get a copy of that to know where these, um, the, the, a frame of where the impact will be around our communities?
I, I think that there was a zoning map that was shown earlier where those, uh, that light industrial zone was proposed. There was a map, maybe put that back up.
Keep going, keep going, guys. We'll, I can get, yeah, there, keep going, keep going.
Yeah, we need to, uh, Wayne has his hand up. Wayne, did you want to continue?
Oh, Jess, yes, madam, madam mayor, Jess, just real, real quickly. So councilman, member Charlie Hill mentioned about grandfathering. It isn't necessarily grandfathering per se, but those uses under the existing zoning would be allowed to remain. There's nothing that's going to change about them. But with the proposed land use, if those uses were to change, let's say you have a different company or that property was to be redeveloped, then they would need to be redeveloped under the proposed general plan. Does that make sense? So allowed to remain, right? So it will be allowed to remain. Let's take for example, a warehouse building or logistic bu- building. Okay, it will be allowed to remain under the existing, under the proposed general plan. It's when that property, there's a change of use or there's a redevelopment of that property under the proposed zoning, then they would need to adhere to that. Does that make sense?
So, um, if I'm understanding right, it's per example, like the villages. Cross street from the villages, if one of these land, you know, one of these purposes go through, one of these businesses come in. purposes go through, one of these businesses come in across the street from the villages, we're not gonna be able to use a slaughterhouse or a concrete batch for future purposes, correct? Like, that's what we're talking about, correct? Like, future, that's what we're, we're looking at.
Yes, those will not be allowed in the future provided that we do implement the general plan.
Well, I just, but since I, I don't know who showed the picture of the swap meet, we changed that to light industrial. Well, why wouldn't we allow a batch plant on the edge of the five freeway and the trucking or a truck terminal or truck yard that is where, right close to the freeway, which you would figure that would be beneficial for the trucking, beneficial for our streets because they would get off and on the freeway right off of the, right off of the uh i- in the area. But we're gonna change it to light industrial, which limits.
We're not.
What are you gonna change it to?
It, the, the, it, nothing is changing at the swap meet. The current zoning of the swap meet.
You showed something that
Yes, that, that was just a potential vision for the future. So the freeway commercial land use designation is, is the vision, the long-term vision of what we want to see um based off of public input that we've received. And then the actual zone, the current zoning of that site is M two. I think all of the properties along the freeway are actually currently zoned M two, but they have a freeway overlay zone on top of them. We are not proposing to change any of that.
But we are changing it from M two.
We, we are not changing it, we are not changing it from M two to anything. It's, it's going to remain M two.
Okay.
And the, the land use designation currently within the general plan is already freeway commercial, but we are creating a separate, for the sake of mapping, we are creating the separate land use category of freeway commercial to make it more uh to make that vision more solidified. So, but there, there's no change that they, and that was just an example of at some point in the future, properties get redeveloped. And so it was just a vision board essentially. But it's, it's not changing.
So Quang, could you continue, please?
Absolutely. Um, okay, so next slide, please. So at, at the end of the day, the, the proposed general plan is creating these buffers because it's in line with two of the guiding principles that Laura mentioned in the initial part of her presentation. Um specifically, healthy and safe neighborhoods and environmental justice and community safety. Two principles uh that the residents of Santa Fe Springs um values. Next slide, please. So other changes to the existing land use plan involves focus areas and catalytic sites. This is a map uh from the proposed general plan. And in the next few slides, I'll go over the various focus areas and catalytic sites in, in greater detail. Next slide, please. So the, the first focus area is uh the downtown area. The, the general plan is looking to create a downtown Santa Fe Springs uh with a goal of creating a pedestrian-oriented mixed-use district with public gathering spaces that attract both the local community as well as that, that the visitors from outside the city. Next slide, please. And, and to capitalize the existing metro link station on Imperial as well as uh the future L line station on Washington Boulevard, the proposed general plan is looking to create a mixed-use TOD land use category to transition auto-dominated properties into a compact, walkable district of homes, shops, restaurants, live workspaces and gathering spaces. Next slide, please. The proposed general plan also continues the current efforts to preserve and enhance the Telegraph Road corridor. The corridor is not only the city's major thoroughfare, but it also will serve as a gateway into the new downtown Santa Fe Springs. Next slide, please. And as, as Laurel already uh mentioned extensively, the new general plan is looking to continue the vision of the existing general plan and promote uses that thrive uh with the freeway frontage and visibility. Next slide, please. So I'll go over um in addition to the focus areas, uh I wanted to go over two catalytic sites and the thought process behind the decision to designate such uses as they're shown in the preferred land use map. So first is the former Vons Distribution Center, which is currently occupied by DAMCO, which is a trucking and logistics company. You should know that, you know, there's two different alternatives that were presented to both the G P E G as well as within a community workshop. And from those meetings, alternative one was selected as the favored uh option which was to basically designate the entire site to Business Park. Next slide, please. So i- in the end, as a compromise, staff in the general plan team decided to designate just the west half of the site to Business Park. And as you'll note, the Business Park designation was drawn with lines, which lines up to the adjacent residential community. Um, a community that is residents of our adjacent city in the city of Norwalk. Um, we decided to keep the east portion as industrial to allow existing industrial uses to remain on this portion of the site, uh albeit at a smaller scale. Next slide, please. For the Florence Norrock Boulevard site, um it's, it's important that, to note that we did not just look at one property. Uh, we looked at the entire block uh from Florence Avenue to the north, Lakeland Road to the south, Fulton Wells to the west and Nora Boulevard to the east. Next slide, please. And if you look at the existing and proposed land use map, you'll find that most of this area is currently uh has a general plan land use designation as industrial with a small portion along Norwalk as commercial. So as a result, what you find today is that various uh land uses are incompatible with one another. You have an adult use, a manufacturing use, mobile home park, all next to one another. So the proposed land use plan is hoping to provide the foundation for future land uses within this area to be more compatible with one another. Uh, we're proposing to designate the westerly portion as multifamily and areas along Norwalk, along with the Kuhn's property as commercial. Um, basically to serve the nearby uh multifamily residential that is proposed in this area. Next slide, please. So there, there's a lot of changes that are proposed. As you'll find, there's a new high-density residential land use category, new freeway commercial category, uh downtown mixed use, mixed use TOD and a light industrial. Um, but at the end of the day, industrial uses will still be the, a sixty-nine point three percent of the overall land use categories within Santa Fe Springs. That's what it was in nineteen ninety-three when we adopted the previous general plan. And with the current general plan, industrial will still remain the predominant um land use category. Next slide, please. That's the end of my presentation. I'd like to hand it over to Wayne Morale to make some closing remarks.
Madam Mayor, members of the city council audience, we have presented an overview of the general plan. The process involved, you've seen that it's a long-term plan, a long-term vision. You've noted that the general plan is the top of the triangle and everything flows from that and that essentially the California Constitution gives the cities such as ourselves the ability within our jurisdiction to limit police sanitary and ordinances that do not conflict with general law. This is commonly known as the policing powers and all cities have this. And it's the ability to protect the public health, safety and welfare. Before I conclude, it's a vision, it's a policy statement. I know there's concern about change and we haven't done this, what, for thirty years? But change is inevitable. That, that is certain. So again, for a lot of these properties, a lot of these uses, the last one that Quang showed that's probably most fresh in everybody's mind is the DAMCO facility. That's not going to change with this general plan. That will be allowed to remain. And this is a very major point that I need everyone to understand. With the vision, what it does is when that property is redeveloped, it is redeveloped under the existing general plan. Without that vision, then that facility will be allowed and all other facilities next to residential will be industrial facilities, will be allowed to continue in the exact same manner as they've done for the last thirty-something years. This is really an opportunity for when these properties are developed next to residential, that there's an opportunity for some type of change. Without the ability to do this, you're left with continuing the same thing that we've done for the last thirty-something years.
Wayne, when you're saying, when you're saying residential, you're talking about the Norwalk residents, not the Santa Fe Springs residents, correct?
That is correct. It's, I can only speak for me and I don't want to speak for anybody else. But I think we have a responsibility to do what is right, not only for all residents, but also for any residents that are adjacent to us. Because if the role was reversed, I think we would want another city if they were going through this process to consider our residents. And again, I cannot speak for anyone else, but I think that is, would be the socially responsible thing to do. And that's just me. Nobody else speak it. Thank you.
Thank you, Wayne. And also I would like to ask if we can get this PowerPoint placed on our general website. How fast can we do that? Wayne?
Quang, we could probably have it done tomorrow.
Okay, good, thank you.
I'm asking, actually, I should ask Jeff. Jeff, how soon can we do this?
Tomorrow's good.
Okay, tomorrow.
Thank you. Thank you for this presentation. Uh, we, we really appreciate it. So we're going to uh move on to public comments. Uh, public comments are now open and anyone joining us through Zoom can use the raise hand function if you wish to make a public comment on any of the items on the agenda. The city clerk, excuse me?
Madam Mayor, I just want to note, since we've run past six, do you want to limit it to so many minutes or how long you let this run for?
Yes, yes. Okay, the city clerk will see if you have raised your hand through the Zoom application and you will have three minutes to speak. Please be mindful that we do have our regular scheduled uh city council meeting, so please don't repeat of what anybody has said before you. Thank you. So uh, city clerk, do we have any members of the public present that wish to speak today?
Madam Mayor, we have a few speakers. Uh, the first one is Jose Cornejo.
Okay, uh, Jose, are you there?
Yes, I am. You can hear me, I speak.
Yes, thank you.
Good evening. My name is Jose Cornejo and I'm speaking on behalf of NAOP SoCal and its one hun- thousand three hundred members. NAOP is an organization of business owners, developers and professionals related to office and industrial and mixed-use properties. NAOP has uh members are very concerned and are strongly opposed to the draft general plan language that currently changes the zoning of business park and industrial and light industrial category, ga- categories, blankly prohibiting specific use on environmental impacts from trucks and warehouse operations. Over the last couple of years, the California Resources Board has enacted numerous regulations on truck admissions. Truck admissions have dramatically declined and continue to decline. And due to, and due to various uh regulations of CARB and EPA, they will continue to decline. This is, these relatively new rules have reduced particulate matter by ninety uh nine percent and NOx emissions by ninety percent. Carb, CARB's own tests show that particulate uh matter filters have reduced truck admissions and PM filters ver- uh virtually eliminate PM truck exhaust and the impacts on air quality. The reality is that CARB has already adopted an entire suite of regulations requiring trucks and entries to meet the cleanest standards. Additionally, now these multiple rules, and I mean multiple rules, have hugely impacted onsite operations. Rage trucks rule, trailer truck rules, greenhouse, ga- greenhouse gas reduction rules, five-minute idling rules, refrigerated truck rules, pet uh, period, 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 uh, sorry, periodic, uh, smoke inspection program. Many of these rules are continued to go on. This summer, or this last summer, um, CARB passed some additional rules onto lower NOx that will, and additionally by redoing NOx by se- seventy-five percent by twenty twenty-four and ninety percent by twenty twenty-seven. CARB is not the only one that's doing all these uh uh resource deductions. We've also recently had the adoption by the Air Quality Management District of the Warehouse Indirect Source Rules. The purpose of the rule twenty-three oh five was to reduce local and regional emissions from NOx and particulate matter and to facilitate emissions reduction associated with warehouses and mobile sources and at uh, mobile sources attracted by warehouse use. These meets the highest standards uh in the nation to reduce um to reduce ozone and fine particulate matter. Changing the current zone designations will prohibit Santa Fe Springs from realizing the benefits.
Thank you, Jose. I'm sorry. Uh, thank you so much.
Madam Mayor, next we have Jeff Ferrano.
Okay, hi Jeff.
Hi, good, good evening, Madam Mayor uh and city council members. Uh, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Thank you.
Uh, thank you. I am, uh, my name's Jeff Ferrano. I'm a land use and sequel attorney with Rattan and Tucker. Uh, we represent Goodman and other industrial landowners in the city. We also represent a number of cities uh and local agencies throughout California. Uh, previously submitted a letter um for uh on Goodman's behalf of objecting to the general plan update, but um, that's not the purpose. The purpose is uh to work with the city to come up with short-term and long-term uh solutions to their goals. Uh, and that, with that in mind, we respectfully request that the city bifurcate uh the housing element update and the general plan update. Um, the staff had mentioned uh a couple of things that were actually inaccurate in their presentation. Uh, first and foremost is that the city cannot legally bifurcate the general plan update and the housing element update. The reality is that the housing element is governed by housing element law, which is separate from general plan law. And while uh there is consistency requirements, neither body of law requires that they be updated at the same time. Uh, this is evident by the fact that most cities throughout the state, those that are on the eight-year um cycle are currently updating their housing elements. Uh, but few, if any, are updating the general plan. Most of them will trail the general plan update shortly thereafter. Uh Costa Mesa, Irvine, Whittier, Cerritos, uh La Palma, these are all examples of cities that are currently doing that. All of them are still, uh will still be in compliance because there is a certain amount of leeway that is built in and allowed for. Uh additionally, Additionally, the statement that the non-conforming uses can continue until a change of use is simply not accurate, at least not according to the current zoning code. The code says that non-conforming uses must be discontinued within five years. Additionally, bifurcating the two updates would not impact any of the grants from the state that the city is currently receiving because those grants require compliance with the housing element law. And bifurcating the two does not make the housing element not in compliance. Then those grants do not require the general plan be updated. Furthermore, you know, there would be no issues as far as sequoia is concerned because the EIR already studies all the impacts of the housing element. Bifurcating the two does not change those impacts. There might be some minor changes required to state that it is being bifurcated. But that would not violate sequoia and the two would still be, it would still be compliant. Now, we understand that there are financial costs associated with this and the industrial community would be open to working with the city to subsidize those costs. Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you.
Madam Mayor, next we have Rafi Manajin.
Hi Rafi.
Hi, good evening, Madam Mayor, council members, thank you very much. I spoke last week and I wanted to highlight, we've since sent an updated letter earlier today. Just wanted to highlight a couple of points with regards to our property, which we think is, one, factually not abutting any Santa Fe Springs residence and that is already buffered by several areas to, in all directions. And we think our property is very unique and should not be part of the downzoning that is being proposed in the draft. And a couple of things that we've, we were since found out was that the J-PAC committee had looked at our property and some of the adjoining properties back in October. And they had reviewed some proposed land use changes. And one of the areas that they looked at was the Los Nietos Industrial Focus Area, which is where our property is located. The J-PAC was presented with three options for this focus area. One, to keep the existing general plan and then two alternatives, one and two. Of these three options, none of them proposed changing the industrial designation of our property. While there were changes proposed to some of the properties on the east side of the six oh five freeway in alternate, in the one and two alternates. After reviewing the various options, the J-PAC then voted and sixty percent of the members voted to retain the existing general plan use designations rather than accept either of the alternatives. And so, you know, and of the other four areas that the J-PAC reviewed, this was the only area where the majority of the J-PAC members voted to retain the existing general plan designation. And so, we do not see why our property is being downzoned or proposed to be downzoned. We would ask once again that the planning commission, the city council advise staff to withdraw the downzoning of our specific property. As some of the other comments, the one thing I'd like to focus in on is if the city is, is, you know, gonna proceed with this, then we would recommend that basically the, the city council appoint an ad hoc subcommittee of two council members and have the subcommittee then meet with the stakeholders, the specific stakeholders who have raised objections and staff and to try and resolve these issues and objections that have been raised. And then create a new timeline for adoption of the remainder of the general plan update. I think I'm running out of time. But I, we just want to underscore the fact that we have met with the city about our property numerous times, numerous proposals. Not once, not once ever was the rezoning of our property ever brought up as an issue. And the last point I'd like to make is that anything that we would propose to the city and to the city council would still be at the city's discretion. And so we couldn't do something that would not meet the majority's will ultimately and staff's support. So thank you very much for the time, good evening.
Thank you, city clerk and everybody listening. Because of time restraints, we're going to have to limit to at least five more speakers. So that's all, we have another meeting to, to attend to. So city clerk, who is our next public speaker?
Jeff Hamilton.
Thank you. Jeff?
Hi, Madam Mayor and council members, are you able to hear me?
Uh, yes, we're able to hear you, thank you.
Great, thank you. So yeah, this is Jeff Hamilton, I'm with Goodman. And as you guys know, I'd largely like to speak about the, the former Vons distribution site. And I, I've heard a lot of things here this evening, basically stating that more or less industrial is bad. And, and I'd just like to remind you guys that Santa Fe Springs is, has been based on an industrial city. And my, my other understanding is, is that the city is in need of some additional funding and wanting to improve their, their economic status in the city. And McMaster Car is a wonderful example of, of a, a business that provides significant sales tax to the city. And to my understanding, it's the largest amount of sales tax to the city. And they are an industrial business, they're an e-commerce business, they're in a building that is zoned industrial. And the, you know, it's, it's significant to the residents, it's significant to the city. And, and we have a, we finally finished the economic impact report. And we actually have an individual on this evening who is going to speak to that and I, I hope you'll allow him to speak. His name is Ryan Hall. And he will go on to explain the significant economic impact that downzoning this property, the former Vons property, would have on the residents and the, and the city itself. And, and just to, to address one of Wayne's comments, which was the, this is only impacted if this, if this property is redeveloped. Well, what, what Ryan will go on to show and what the, the, the report goes on to detail is that, yes, if this property is redeveloped as industrial, the city, the city will have in the realm of a hundred and fifty million dollars more than if this were, were zoned business park and redeveloped. So again, I, I know you guys have a lot to get through and I don't want to take everyone's time. But it's a very significant impact to not only property owners, but the, the city and the residents as well. So again, thanks for your time and we look forward to trying to work through this thing either via bifurcation or, or, you know, just changing our zoning back to, to what it currently is. So again, appreciate your time, thanks.
Thank you, Jeff.
Madam Mayor, next we have Ryan Hall.
Thank you.
All right, thank you for your time. Hi. Uh, as Jeff led into this, at the request of Goodman, my firm DPFG has prepared an economic benefit analysis and key fiscal revenue summary for the former Vons distribution site. Uh, my firm DPFG is a national real estate consulting firm that represents land developers and builders on many land use related matters. Uh, and I personally have ten years of experience in the industry and have parried dozens of FIA's throughout the state, mostly in Southern California, which many of them also have the economic benefit analysis included, such as this report. This EBA and key fiscal revenue summary uses an industry standard approach. EBA using in-plan software, which is a proprietary model that estimates economic benefits on industries in a local geographic area based off construction costs of the redevelopment as well as the employees and their impact in the surrounding community. Uh, we also project the fiscal revenues associated with the, the redevelopment of, of the site, the hypothetical redevelopment of the site, uh, which would be directly impacted to the city's general fund. We analyzed two different scenarios. One would be the business park aspect of, I think it was like around fifty-five percent of it being converted to business park versus the existing M-two industrial zoning. And we used a three-year snapshot, which would represent the amount of time Goodman estimates it would take to redevelop and fully absorb the project site in this hypothetical redevelopment scenario. And based on the internal estimates, it'd be, it would take approximately thirty years or just under thirty years for them to absorb the business park aspect, which would be, which would significantly hinder the fiscal revenues coming into the city as well as the economic development of the area. Based on our analysis, we show approximately two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars less in the redevelopment of the business park with the industrial as opposed to the existing industry, the existing land use zoning. We also did the same thing for the economic benefits of the area. And as Jeff said, the total economic output, we are showing a reduction of over a hundred and fifty million dollars. And that is just value added to the community, not necessarily anything that affects the Santa Fe Springs budget. That would be the fiscal aspect of this, but more of just the economic prosperity of the region. Thank you for your time, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Ryan.
Madam Mayor, next we have Len Cottrell.
Thank you, hi Len.
Hey, good evening, everybody. I'm assuming you can hear me, but this is Lang Cottrell with Goodman as well. So appreciate the time tonight. I, we really appreciate the opportunity over the last couple of weeks to have these conversations. I'm not going to repeat a lot of the things that Jeff or Ryan or Jeff might have commented on. But clearly we're, we have a vested interest in the city of Santa Fe Springs. We have a vested interest in the Vons site as well. One of the, I, I, one of the things that I think is really important and hopefully these conversations have, have maybe brought to light is that there are, there are gaps in the analysis that has been put together. We don't, we don't need to talk about the, whether we were communicated correctly or not. But at the end of the day, when you, when you start, I think it's very important to, for the council to consider the economic impacts and have the data related to the economic impacts to the city and its residents on not only the short, current, current basis, but also the long-term basis should, should you approve this, this or any other general plan. One glaring, uh, missing piece in this is a economic analysis of each and every one of the changes that is being proposed and how that would affect the city's finances over time. There, there are a lot of different things that can be done and different strategies and, and basically implementation of different land uses that could be put together to, to come up with the, with a one that not only satisfies a lot of the goals of the city from a protecting the residences, improving traffic, but also the, the financial stability of the city and as well. So I, I would urge that, one of the things that I think is really missing is that, that analysis and I would urge the city to, and the council to, to again bifurcate this, take more time to properly analyze that so that the, when, when you do make a decision, you have all of the information that you need. I would also just rec, you know, we have, as Jeff said, we, we've heard that a lot of the, all the, all the horribles of industrial real estate from pollution and whatnot. But I would also, I think we should be reminded that industrial development of a number of properties within the city have been the, has been the, the reason some of those pollution situations have been cleaned up. Thrifty Oil, the refinery land, land was developed into one of the best industrial piece, properties in Southern California only because we were allowed to build the larger facilities that were we able to financially remediate Lakeland property, so.
Thank you, Lang.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, we have T. Summerfield.
Thank you, Mr. Summerfield.
Hello, yeah, Madam Mayor and council. I am here in behalf of Cascade Pump Company. We're located on Norwalk Boulevard just north of Telegraph. Earlier in the presentation tonight, Quan said that the businesses that were outside the five hundred-foot range from the, the business, from the residential community would not be affected by this change in the, the downzoning. We meet that requirement. It appears that we are in a peninsula that extends from Telegraph up Norwalk Boulevard on one side of the street. And I would appreciate it if that could be reviewed along with a delay in the implementation of the general plan so that it could be discussed further. My company has been in Santa Fe Springs since before there was a city. I've been on two prior general plan committees and so I kind of know how this operates. And I really appreciate the city and the consultants taking the time to discuss this and hopefully discuss it further in the future, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Summerfield. And this will be our fifth and final public comments.
Madam Mayor, we have Steve Missouri.
Hi, Steve.
Hi, council, good evening. I, on behalf of Rexford, I did submit an email in writing today and the council has encouraged everyone to submit things in writing. So I'd really be helpful if the, the city could acknowledge that, what I submitted, basically with some suggested language. And first of all, I agree with all the, the speakers that, that appears that we need more time to talk through some of these things and have dialogue because we've had very little time for dialogue on these one-hour study sessions, number one. And number, so, but my, my submittal was minor language changes that would not outright prohibit certain kinds of trucking uses, which should be more appropriately addressed in the zoning codes. It was a very simple request, so I would appreciate an acknowledgement of that somehow so that we could see if that could be considered in the, in the general plan update language. And so I would concede my time if anyone else wants to speak, thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Okay, so that concludes our public comments. And I would like to see if our council has any additional comments for our staff or questions.
Yeah, we need to have another study session because I thought from the prior meeting, Madam Mayor, that we were going to get the questions more of a dialogue of answering questions and being able to ask questions than more of a slideshow of, of understanding what a general plan is again. You know, we don't have enough time to be going through slideshows than to actually getting down to the nitty-gritty of answering the questions or getting the questions answered that these, the people in the council has. Because as you can see, it's already took an hour and a half and we didn't even really get any questions really answered.
Yeah, and I apologize for the, the public that cannot speak right now, but because of the time restraint. So yes, we can definitely eliminate the, the PowerPoint and have another study session. We can do that next week. If, if all of our council are okay, we can make a, a study session schedule.
Um, Madam Mayor, I, I, just, just, like, piggyback off what Jay said, I, I feel like we're doing the same, the slideshow over and over and we're not really interacting with our businesses. The businesses are speaking and like I said, I see that we have so many still that need to speak. I feel rude that the fact that these businesses have been listening to this whole presentation again and we're not given, given the opportunity to even speak what they're, what they need to tell us. They're taking their time out of, probably a lot of them already off of work, should be at home, but they're taking their time to be here, listen to the same thing we're listening and they're not going to be heard. I really think it has to be hands-on, one-on-one instead of the, the slideshow. I mean, yeah, because of Zoom, I mean, because of COVID, we have to do Zoom, but we need more interaction. We need more questions asked, answers back and forth. Cause I think my first twenty minutes were just about slideshows, not until the end that we start getting to the nitty-gritty and concerns. Now we have to end it early because we have our city council meeting. So please, I mean, we need to stop the slideshows and really get down to the bottom of it and answer questions, ask questions and move forward on this, please.
Yeah, that was.
Madam Mayor, Madam Mayor, this, this is the city manager. Last Tuesday, we had over two and a half hours of unabated discussion from the business community. They didn't get stopped, they went to the very end. And there was a lot of questions that were asked. We were also brought forward a meeting last Friday where we're going to hopefully have a decision. a meeting last Friday where we've been, hopefully have a discussion, but it was dominated by, um, only a few speakers and we were, but we're open to having more of those meetings. If the county, and tonight was really to discuss what was brought up last week, uh, questions that the, that the, uh, business community had. So we were trying to address that, not to give us a slideshow, to have a slideshow that you've had many times ago, but to respond to a number of things that were being brought up last Tuesday. We are willing the staff and, and we're also to have council. If you want to have dialogue and have these like we had last Tuesday, we can do those, you know, every day on weekends, at nights, whenever you want to. But I want to let you know, we just did not have this slideshow to have a slideshow. We were trying to respond to the two and a half hours worth of discussion last week. We had a meeting last Friday to hope to get some more information so we can have some discussions and give and take and suggestions from them, um, the, the business community to give us some real ideas. Like I got one, we got some from Steve Missouri, which we're working through, but we didn't have very much time because that meeting was, was, uh, short. But we plan to have as many meetings as we need as staff, but also if council want to be part of those, we can be there and have meetings and have discussions. But all I know today was not just to have a meet, a, a presentation for a presentation sake. It was to answer questions that were brought up over the last two meetings.
Yeah, what questions? Because I didn't, we didn't get any answers from what you guys discussed on Friday from the businesses. That was supposed to be, that's why you guys had the, the, the meeting. So we can then get those questions and, and answers. And we never even got to that point.
Yeah, well, that meeting unfortunately was dominated, um, by, uh, one speaker. We had another, one suggestion was brought up by, uh, Steve Missouri and we are responding, uh, that. It was in his letter today. So, um, and we were hoping to have some time for discussion, but that didn't happen. But again, I want the council to feel if they want to have more sessions like we had last Tuesday where we stop, answer questions with staff or you can have follow-up questions, we can do that. Um, but I wanted that, you know, that was our objective for tonight, not to.
Okay, this is what we're going to do. What we're going to do is we're going to, uh, have staff get ahold of our council after, but we definitely need to move on to our city council meeting. We highly respect our, our public and everything that they said. Everybody, uh, responded, took notes, but we, we definitely, uh, if our council would like to have a one-to-one study session, we can get ahold of each council member and our mayor pro tem and we can go ahead and arrange that. So if you're good with that, we can go ahead and during this meeting and start our other council meeting and we can go ahead and reschedule another study session or, I'm sorry, schedule a study session. Okay, is everybody good with that? Our, our council and our mayor pro tem? Let me go down the list. Okay, John, uh, council member more. Are you okay with that?
No, absolutely. We need more constructive dialogue and more question and answer type of format. I appreciate the, the precision. But yeah, we do need that.
Okay, thank you. Council member Sarno, are you okay with that? Okay.
Sooner than later though, not, we can't have one every week, Madam Mayor, because we're running out of time.
Okay, yes. Council member Trujillo?
Yes, please. Quicker the better.
Okay, Mayor Pro Tem Samora?
Uh, yes, I'm the more, even if we have to do ad hoc committees, I mean, whatever we gotta do to get it more personal, um, I'm with it.
Okay, thank you. And I'm okay with it too. So we will, uh, definitely schedule another and our staff will get ahold of each and every one of us. Okay, so at this time, I would like to adjourn this meeting at six thirty-six PM.